Testing 1, 2, 3. This will be the September 17th, 2014 City Council's Special Meeting, followed by the regular meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 17th, approximately 6:45, and I'll open it up as a public hearing to discuss, take action on the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grant.
We are attempting to secure another $50,000 to help us towards getting the soccer field lights down at the Satellite Beach Sports and Recreation Park. The Satellite Beach Soccer Club, as you may recall, was awarded $50,000 through the Florida Youth Soccer Association. We were hoping to be able to capture another large sum of money through the FERDAP, or Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, grant. The council may recall, audience may, the FERDAP grant is a point-driven grant. Lots of things get you points, including public participation, cooperative agreements, and elements that you put in your project. So, the project that we're proposing for the 1516 FERDAP submittal is the secure -- there are several elements. The large one would be the lighting of one of the Satellite Beach soccer fields. Other new elements would include a new picnic area, additional new exercise trail equipment, and a security lighting. And security lighting gets us points, so therefore it's important to keep our people safe. The renovation aspects are paving one of the now moral handicap parking spaces. The totlot playground, which was originally a grant purchase, has been taken out. It was in bad shape, so we're going to renovate that area, renovate the nature trail on the north and west side, and renovate the picnic facility at the skate park underneath the pavilion that currently has no picnic tables. So, we're hoping that those would give us the maximum amount of points on our grant and put us close to being able to be in good running for that. We do have -- we don't have a submittal date yet, but DEP revised their rules, and they have not submitted or have not provided a submittal date, but it would be sometime in October. So, we're around the corner, and I'm hoping for Satellite Beach City Council to approve the submittal of a $150,000 grant for FERDAP. That is a 25% matching, which is $37,500, of which the Satellite Beach Soccer Club has already donated 10, and we have about 15 other pledged, so the city wouldn't be out to very much money.
Thank you very much.
I move to authorize the Recreation Department to submit a $150,000 FERDAP grant for the described elements, with a total project cost of $150,000 and a city match of $17,500.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any further discussion from council? Here are none at this time. Open up for public comments concerning this agenda item. Here are none. Back to council.
I think this is a great -- I mean, this is something that we've been looking at doing, and, you know, it's great that we have these grants available now to make this stuff happen, so I think it's great.
I think, you know, ever since day one when we did obtain that, part of the plan was always at some time, if we could afford to light it, we would light it, and I think that's a great way. And I know the soccer has really, you know, stepped up and helped contribute, and other people, and I think that's what makes it work, so I think it's a great idea. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Housewoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gaud?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion carries three, nothing.
Thank you.
Any further business? Here are none. The portion is adjourned, and council meeting will start approximately 7:00. I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting of the city of Satellite Beach, September 17th, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join the Councilman Montanaro for, I believe, a prayer and a moment -- prayer and a pledge. Thank you.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Please help us to make good decisions for our city and our residents. Please continue to watch out over our armed forces, who are now being deployed into Africa to fight the Ebola issue. Watch out over them, and watch out over all of our other forces that are stationed around the world, and please bring them back to their loved ones. Amen. If you'll join me in the pledge.
Pledge, we are the United States of America, and we are proud of our citizens, one nation under God, and in the world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Citizens' Comments. This is for comments for non-agenda items, so at this time, the floor is open for citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Here are none. Close citizens' comments. City council comments. Who would like to start? Cheryl?
I did attend the League of Cities Dinner. Also, I attended part of the Lagoon River meeting on September 4th. I couldn't attend all day because of work, but I did attend a portion of it. I think you all know that Lighting Science is moving out of town probably by the end of this week or early next week. It's unfortunate, but one of the things I was thinking about, since we do need a home for our back truck, is perhaps that storage building behind there, maybe renting that from the store, the back truck in there, to keep it out of the elements until we can do something about that. And then lastly, I did attend the Candlelighters Benefit Great Event. Every year it gets bigger and bigger, and last I heard the numbers they had raised, almost over $29,000 for children with cancer in Brevard County. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I attended the South Beaches Coalition Meeting. Commissioner Gowdy from Melbourne Beach is our representative on the TPO, and even though she's new, I'm pleased to say that she's obviously doing a good job of coming up to speed on the issues. There were no issues on this month's TPO that directly affected the South Beaches. She also brought back a number of publications that have been put out by the TPO that are very informative, and I'm going to get copies for each member of the council.
Thank you.
I also attended the Indian River Lagoon meeting that we had here and hosted in Satellite Beach, and Senator Thad Altmann was here, and also Representative Debbie Mayfield from Vero Beach was in attendance, and it was a pretty good meeting. I also attended the board meeting and the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on the 8th, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I attended Space Coast League of Cities, the board, and the regular membership meeting, and I want to thank Courtney for putting together the Indian River Lagoon Day. It was pretty interesting. I had the opportunity to stay for the whole event. There was some great information, and it really seems like there's a lot of people who now are aware of the problems in the lagoon and things that need to be done to solve it. How we're going to get the funds is part of what that process on that day was about, and I think, you know, enough people are starting to funnel in the right direction, and I think stuff is going to get done. But Courtney, thank you for putting together, and your staff for hosting it. Any further comments from council? Here are none. Move on to Agenda Item Number 5, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The city will be holding a kickoff workshop on Tuesday, September 23rd, at 6:00 at the David R. Schecter Community Center. This workshop is called Creating a Resilient Community, and this is basically the result of a grant that the city applied for and received with the Regional Planning Council to do a community participation component prior to creating our, what we call AAA policies in our comprehensive plan, as well as ordinances, that deal with how the city will address future sea level rise and climate change. So, that meeting will be kind of the introductory meeting to get some preliminary information from the community. Then we will be moving into what we call the survey mode, and we're using a tool called MetroQuest, which is a very unique computer-generated survey tool. And we will have a booth at the Ocean Reef Beach Festival with iPads to get the community to take this survey, and then we'll be offering that survey, you know, throughout the months, and try to basically get some community participation and feedback on the issues related to sea level rise and climate change in our community. Basically, you know, coastal impacts for that. So, that'll be a great project. I hope that you all can be at that meeting. It's very important to get that preliminary information. We will have a number of presenters at that meeting. One will be including our fire chief, talking about emergency management. We will have Fort Lauderdale, a representative of the city of Fort Lauderdale, talking about their planning processes they went through for climate change. And then we will have a presentation from a pretty nationally-known attorney that specializes in this type of policy and solutions for addressing climate change. So, it'll be very interesting, and I hope you all can attend. I did want to let you know that we did come in agreement with Michael and Gerald Deenan on a stipulated settlement agreement for their code enforcement issue. I've included that in the agenda, since we've gotten public records requests, and I figured I'd just head that off and put it in the agenda package. I did receive a letter from a resident thanking our building official, John Stone, for his work on a construction project to replace a failing seawall. I got another Public Works Thank You Letter from a resident for their work in the fountains, and we also got another email for their quick response in addressing a pothole in the road, in one of our roads. I did want to confirm with you, I did let you know that we were preliminarily approved for funding from the TPO for our A-1A project. We did get that formally approved last week by the TPO. No questions asked, so that is approximately $200,000 for the engineering and about $530,000 -- $570,000, I'm sorry, for construction. We did hold, like you said, the workshop on a -- with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection regarding our Basin Management Action Plan. That workshop was basically a way to get some questions answered from both sides. It was kind of like a conversation. So, you saw FDEP present, you saw the city present, I presented on Smolmar Utility, and then you saw even the St. John's Water Management District present on their idea for a new district, a new special district. And that was really done to solve some problems, because we seem to be getting in a -- we seem to stagnate on some of the issues, and we already are seeing the fruits of that labor. So, we've received some comments from DEP on our new model that we submitted, the stakeholders, meaning all of the cities and county in Brevard County, for the new BMAP, and so we're getting some results from that workshop. So, I thank you for attending. I did want to thank our city clerk's office for arranging that. They arranged all the lunch, did all the work for that workshop, and I wanted to extend my appreciation for their great job. I did have some additional items. The sports park road has been repaired, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. We did repair that roadway.
Sports park what?
Road. And then lastly, I have -- I will need, in my contract, I normally, if I take off more than three days in a row, I need to get approval from you. Next week, I will need to take that week off, even though I will be home and available by phone and email, or probably on the phone the whole time I'm there. I will need to take that time off, so I will need to get approval from you to do that.
Works for me.
Works.
Don't answer the phone.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? Here are none. Move on to Agenda Item Number 6. Councilwoman Deenan had asked for a few proclamations to be put on our agenda, and I appreciate her doing that, and she will be reading them at this time. The first one, September 11th, as Patriot Day, a national day of service and remembrance.
Whereas September 11th, 2014, marks the 13th-year anniversary of an unprovoked and senseless act of terrorism on our homeland. Four civilian aircraft were hijacked on September 11th, 2001, and crashed into New York -- in New York City, Pennsylvania, and the Pentagon. And whereas we will always remember the innocent lives of the U.S. citizens of all heritage, as well as visiting citizens of foreign nations, perished as a result of those horrendous attacks meant to terrorize our nation. And whereas we remember the sacrifice of our civilian and military first responders who rushed into darkness to carry others from danger, we honor their bravery and courageous for their quick and selfless actions. And whereas on this somber day, we remind all those who wish our nation harm, that we stand united as one nation undergone vigilant in our fight against terror and determined to continue as a beacon of hope and freedom for people everywhere. And whereas, in a minimal spirit of the American people, will not tire, will not falter, and will not fail in fighting for the safety and security of our homeland. And whereas Congress has approved and requests that we observe September 11th as Patriot Day, a national day of service and remembrance. Now, I therefore -- now, therefore, I, Frank P. Continu, Mayor of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, do hereby proclaim September 11th as Patriot Day and a national day of service and remembrance. And I encourage our community to join in honoring and remembering the victims of September 11th, 2001, and pay tribute to the many heroes who protected and defended our great nation, and to the police and firefighters who keep our community safe.
Thank you. And the next one is recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and Lana Burnett from the Rufus Fairbanks Chapter and the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution is here to accept it.
Proclamation of the city of Satellite Beach, Florida, whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty to themselves and their prosperity, did ordain -- I'm sorry, I'm confused. And established a constitution of the United States of America. Whereas it is the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support it, preserve it, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas the 227th anniversary of the founding of the Constitution provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and recall achievements of our founders and reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship, as well as its attentive responsibilities. And whereas immigrants guaranteed to the American people by the Constitution should be celebrated September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, as a designation by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with public law 915. And whereas the Rufus Fairbanks Chapter, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, encourages the citizens of the city of Satellite Beach to read and know the Constitution of the United States of America. Now, therefore, I, P. Frankettino, Mayor of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 13th, 2014, as Constitution Week.
Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, moving on to Agenda Item 7, FY 2014-15 Budget. And at this time, I will open up a public hearing on the proposed FY 2014-2015 budget.
Mayor, we -- we're asking for you to approve ordinance 1095, adopting the operating millage rate of 8.3206 mils for 2014 and 2014 -- 2014-15, and ordinance 1096, adopting the annual budget on second reading. And there's been no changes since the last.
Okay, thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on the proposed FY 2014-15 budget. The floor is open. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Moving on to Part B, ordinance number 1095. Jim?
Ordinance number 1095, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of adware and taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of 8.3206 mils for fiscal year 2014-2015, providing an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance number 1095.
Thank you for adopting ordinance 1095 on second reading.
I have a motion, thank you, by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, to adopt ordinance number 1095 on second reading. Further discussion from council? Here are none. Open up for public comment on ordinance number 1095. See, none. Bring it back to council.
Dale Abrams, citizen of the CRA. Where's the rollback?
Ron Jagudis, resident of Satellite Beach, within the CRA. Good evening, council. I have two mics in front of me. Which one is?
The one.
That one? Thank you. Interesting comment of the rollback rate. One question I have is, and we've -- I've attended the meetings, the majority of the meetings, related to the budgets and so forth, and how the CRA budget was incorporated. One question I have is, it's not a big item, but it does pertain to the CRA, the sea oats. And I'll bring it a step further here, pertaining to the budget. I may get laughs. I may get ridiculed about the sea oats, but that is a barrier that helps all the residents or taxpayers on the beach to preserve the property during a storm. Sometimes five minutes, sometimes two minutes, make the difference. People don't understand that, who do not live there. And I placed a call today to the county in regards to the people who patrol the beach, the lifeguards, and we found an alternative.
Mr. Jagudis, just interrupt you for one second. Please stop this time. We're on the budget.
This is part of the budget, is it not?
We're on the millage part of the budget. That's what discussion is on at this time.
Well, my question is, does the millage include, within the budget, sea oats for the beach?
I hope I have an answer for you on that. No, it does not.
Excuse me, can I hear you?
Then that means it is not included, is my understanding, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Then that leads to a whole other conundrum here, which I will not discuss in front of this council at this time. Amongst other things, carry on, council. Thank you.
Very much. Public comments still open? Mr. Jerry?
Just to clarify, this is on 1095?
It is, sir.
Jerry Hudson, resident of Satellite Beach. As I said last meeting, when we talked about the -- during the first reading of this thing, I asked why, with the county rolling back their millage rate, why couldn't the city of Satellite Beach roll it back? Why couldn't it be 38.3205, 8.3204? Property values have gone up. Looked like this is just another money grab by the typical Satellite Beach City Council to spend money.
I'll give you my comment, why I think it's a fair budget, and the reason I will say that is, if you look back over capital assets and what things we have and done in years in the town that we really need to do. We have air conditions failing quite a bit. We have buildings that need to be repaired. We have streets that need to be paved that hasn't been paved in quite some time. So, looking at the things that need to be done in the city right now, we held the millage where it was at. That extra so-called revenue, let me explain this, revenue, is so that we can start getting some of those repairs, street pavings and so forth, started.
The paving, I thought, would be handled under the stormwater when we tear up the streets to redo the stormwater pipes, okay? Again, the question is, why do we have to keep it at 32.06? Why couldn't we drop it back to 32.05? Still making more money.
We are.
Still making a ton more money.
Yes, sir, and I agree with you there, but we need that money to do these street pavings and do repairs that has not been done for quite some time in this city, okay?
Okay. Well, just don't spend money on anything wasteful.
Again, we, if you look at our budget and really get down to it, we are not.
And if I could just interject real quick. We presented to the council a presentation on the proposed budget, and that presentation is on our website. There's a slide that shows the increased dollar value of what the increased taxable value is to the city, which is around $350,000. $100,000 of that went to the CRA. $55,000 of that is, was basically a 5% increase in health care, and the city of Satellite Beach only had a 5% increase in health care. There's other areas of Brevard County that experienced a 20% to 30% increase in health care. So, we were pretty good about negotiating our rates as low as we could. We also have, and I am not lying, we also have...
Excuse me in the back. That's the warning, please. I don't want to hear it from the back there, the public comments.
We also have...
No. You don't have the floor at this time.
We also had instances where we had reductions in revenues. For example, we lost the first responder funds. And there's literally a slide that shows the 350 and a deduction of every cost increase and decline in revenue that we had, and after that, we had $25,000 left. So, that shows where that increase of value went. There are some cities that were able to lower the millage rate. A lot of those cities had new construction this year, and we didn't have very much new construction. So, you know, and there's other cities that raised their millage rate. The city of Titusville raised their millage rate. So, you know, it depends on the instances of the city and those specific circumstances. So, we, but we do have that slide available on our webpage.
Public comments still open?
Daniel Johnavasi, I've been Satellite Beach resident for 20 years. So, you brought up an interesting point that kind of piqued my interest. I live on Park Avenue. Park Avenue's looked the same way for 20 years. In fact, when I bought the house, the gal who was writing my mortgage said, "Yeah, Park Avenue is the most dilapidated block in the city." But I'm not the smartest guy in the room, so, and for someone who's been paying taxes as long as I have, I probably should understand a whole lot more of this than I do. So, what I'm trying to figure out with this statement is, 8.3206 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 7.9090, is greater by 5.2%. So, are we paying 5.2% more?
No.
In tax? Okay. Like I said, I'm not the smartest guy in the room here, and I probably should know a whole lot more than that. So, we're rolling back the taxes, the property taxes. Is that what they're telling us?
Your, what we're doing is keeping the millage rate the exact same as last year. So, your taxes will go up because your property went, your property values went up, okay? So, a rollback rate means that if we, say, the city adopted the rollback rate, that means that we would bring in the exact same revenue as we did last year. So, some cities...
But it's going to go, but the price per mil is up. It's going to be more, right?
Yes, because the value of your property increased, but your millage rate stayed the same.
Okay, well, thanks very much. I appreciate it. I just, I got to get a lesson in this stuff here.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
You can call my office and schedule a meeting, and I'll be glad to sit down with you, okay?
I appreciate that.
Public comments still open? Here are none. Back to council. Thank you for the public comment. I have a motion. Do any further discussion from council? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Deenan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deenan?
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes, motion carries for nothing. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance Number 1096. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1096, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the FY 2014-2015 Budget, providing an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance Number 1096.
I'll move to adopt ordinance Number 1096.
I have a motion by Councilman...
On second reading.
Second.
Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott, to adopt ordinance Number 1096 on second reading. Discussion from council?
Yeah, I did, I guess the notice went in the paper that the stormwater utility fee was going up, was out and about a lot last weekend, and didn't have one single person come up and say, yay, my utility fee's going up from 65 to 104. I understand the concept of, you know, repaving the streets and what we need to do, but wasn't in favor of the way that the utility tax went up without notifying the public first through the Beachcaster or through some other avenue, even though the Beachcaster's going to address it in either later this month or in October. I thought we had discussed letting the people know in advance that it may happen, and I thought we were taking a step approach. So, in essence, I'm just not going to support it because of that reason.
Okay, thank you. Further comments from council? I'll say, I was also asked by quite a few residents, and when I sat down and explained it with the shape of the lagoon, I had a lot of positive feedback on it. And a lot of the people I talked to, I explained, I asked them to take a look at, and I actually had some old Beachcasters with me, that showed what the flooding looked like off Park Avenue and some of the roads around here, what we went from 25 and 30 years ago, and where we sit today, if you look at the Soda Parkway, the courts down by Park Avenue where people actually swam after rains for a few days. So there's been a tremendous amount accomplished with the stormwater. And we have things, I explained to people, put on us by the state that were mandated to do, especially with the health of the lagoon. And people were very supportive of it to me, when it was presented that way to them, where we're headed with the lagoon and the stormwater drainage here, and where we've been 30 years ago and 20 years ago, what we've done. So I'm sure there's both sides out there, but that's what I did here. Any further comments from...
Yes, I'd like to clarify one point. It was never said that the Beachcaster would come out before we took action. The intent was for the Beach, Beachcaster to come out to explain what the council had been doing, and that will happen. And it's just as you're saying, Mr. Mayor, it's how you present the issue, as to whether or not people are satisfied or not. And when folks start seeing problem streets and whatnot being addressed, they're, they're pretty satisfied with that.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on ordinance Number 1096.
Ron Jagudis, resident of Satellite Beach. May I ask the mayor, is this the time where I can talk about the budget?
It's what it's about, sir.
I'll bring back the issue of sea oats. It's not in the budget. The properties that pay the taxes to assist in this community along the beachside, they are vulnerable. And subsequently, five minutes here, 10 minutes there, changes the character of the beach. Nowhere it is in the budget for the sea oats. Next issue, we talk about stormwater. My understanding, and perhaps this needs to have a committee formed, or somebody address this, I believe it's not only the lagoon that is in peril, I believe our ocean is in peril, and I believe that there could be certain areas that still have stormwater off, runoff, or leaching into the beautiful beaches of Satellite Beach. That's an issue to reckon with. And there are other projects out there, amongst many. And then I would like to respond to a comment from the dais, in fact, related to what one of the councilmen said, and another councilperson said, and another councilperson said, as far as notice to citizens. I'm going to review those comments, and check and see whether it was truly said of the And I will defer the rest of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Floor is still open for public comments on the budget and ordinance Number 1096. Hearing none, back to council. Any further...
Yeah, I just have one thing. If my memory serves me correctly, it was supposed to be a special edition of the Beachcaster. So I'll go back and look as well, but if, I'm, I'm pretty sure a special edition of the Beachcaster was supposed to go out to address the stormwater.
I believe that's what it is, going out, it's a special edition. Is that correct?
That's correct.
After the fact...
Excuse me. You do not have the podium, please. That's your warning. And when, is that, you have a date on when that is?
Beginning of October.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
No.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries three to one. Thank you. This time, I'll close public hearing, move on to Agenda Item Number 8, Discuss, Take Action on Ordinance Number 1097. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1097, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Ordinance Number 836 of the City of Satellite Beach by updating the City of Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Plan, providing for conflicts, providing severability, and providing an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance Number 1097.
I have two corrections.
Thank you.
Section 2, the first line, City of Satellite Beach is, insert the word hereby, amended. And on the third line from the bottom, City of Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment That's the name of the document.
Okay. Thank you. Any further corrections?
With that, I'll move to adopt ordinance 1097 on second reading as amended.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from council? Hearing none, open up Agenda Item Number 8, Ordinance Number 1097 for discussion.
Ron Jagudis, resident of Satellite Beach, resident within the CRA. I've said this before, and I'll restate my statements here again. It took time to bring this whole CRA plan together, the first go-around with consultants, and that was several years ago. I believe in a matter of a month of meetings, and I'll give the benefit of the doubt of two months, what took one year to put together, if not a little longer, where a plan was abandoned, not addressed, left to lie in the sand, not only was financially updated in projections and a goal set within two months, and I, I stand here thinking that a majority of the citizens in the CRA do not even know what this plan has been changed to, do not even know. Many have busy lives, who are attempting to pay their taxes, increase property taxes. And there's a light here for some of the people here, as far as property values getting better. However, the cost is higher taxes. But to have something come through like this, God bless you, council, God bless everyone, have at it, pass it. It's very good. Enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comments still open on 1097. Hearing none, back to council. Any further comments from council? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
No.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries three to one. And on the statement that it was only looked at for a month, I can assure you, Courtney has looked at this from the day one she got here. And I can't tell you how many meetings I've had, and I'm sure other people have had with her concerning this. So this was not anything that was ever done in a month. So I just want to get that point. Moving on to Agenda Item for next regular council meeting. If there's any additional items that you would like on this, please see our city manager on it, or myself. Courtney, you want to?
Sure. We will have a adoption hearing for the comp plan amendments that you saw as a transmittal a couple months ago, and this is regarding the updated data analysis and so on. The, you also will have, a couple of you asked for golf carts to be on the agenda, so that will be on the agenda at that point. The police department will, will provide that presentation to you. And you also have a first reading on the medical marijuana ordinance. Hopefully, that's all.
On that issue, on American, you're going to bring an ordinance to us? Is that, are we going to have some discussion on it?
You'll have actually a first reading and an ordinance.
Okay. One thing on that, just think about when we were at the League of Cities, some people are even thinking about putting a moratorium on?
Yeah.
For two years? Are you going to bring us something on that, too?
We can provide that option to you. That's, that's a slippery slope, in my opinion, personally. I think it would be better for us to do what we had originally thought. There was a lot of discussion on including prohibitions of actually smoking marijuana at like parks and facilities and stuff like that, which we will include. I thought that was a good idea, and that, we heard that from Sheriff Ivey, so.
I just know, they brought it up when we were at that meeting, so...
Yeah, that's actually Titusville doing that.
Making sure we look at everything.
Yeah, Titusville's doing that, but I think you have areas of Titusville, you know, that this could be potentially very harmful, too, and they're worried about that. So that's, that's their...
Yeah, the other thing, too, that you talked, they talked about with the moratorium is if you establish a moratorium and don't adopt an ordinance, and the state comes out with something that's less restrictive than what you could have already adopted, then we're stuck, so...
Yeah.
Just want to make sure that we cover all bases from what we did.
And we're getting, Indian Harbor Beach is doing theirs right now, I received a copy of that, and then Titusville's going to be sending us the copy of their moratorium language, so we can see what that looks like, and we'll, we'll provide that to you, so you know what that is.
On the golf carts, because I...
Can I ask a question on that? We don't even know what kind of legislation we're facing yet, do we? So are we putting the horse in front of the cart, or, or the other way around?
Yeah, because you're, because it's a zoning ordinance, and that's all we can do as a local government, so, you know, we can do, you know, things that we think are going to deal with other components of it, but it, the legislature isn't going to do a zoning ordinance for you. They're going to do things like, you know, what you have to, maybe you have to grow on-site, or things like that, and that may affect the way we regulate it later, but we can always change it later.
And all of this is contingent upon the referendum passing?
Correct.
And I still haven't seen the language for the referendum.
We can send that to you.
Is it just for medical marijuana, or?
But it's very broad.
Yeah.
It's very broad.
Okay.
It's much broader than the other states that have done it.
Okay. Yeah, on number eight for next time, the golf carts, I know Councilwoman Dean brought it up, and then I was the other person, because I was approached by Indian Harbor Beach, a councilperson from Indian Harbor Beach, who said that he was, or they were possibly interested. So if they are or they aren't, could we also find out?
Yeah, from what I understand, right now, it's a councilperson, they haven't discussed that as a council.
Okay.
But when they do, they're, they're going to let us know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Discuss what?
The golf cart issue, whether they want to tackle that as, you know, as a council or not. I think there's one council member right now that's interested in having golf carts. So one state...
Again, I understand that it is state law, but it's permissible.
It is, and that's what we're going to present to you, to see if you want to do it anymore.
All I'm just saying is, it's permissible if they're street legal, licensable golf carts.
Right.
If they're just regular golf carts, they're not.
Right. So, so why do we need to take any further action?
Well, we're going to find out. We're going to find out. We're going to make the presentation. We're going to make the presentation from, I was just saying, I was approached by the city next to us, and saying if we did, if they were going to do something, it would seem logical to maybe look it together on that issue. Because of the way our streets go in the town here. Okay? Again, any other council agenda items, please bring it to myself or the city manager. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Adoption of Minutes of the Regular Meeting, August 20th, the September 3rd Workshop Meeting, and the September 3rd Regular Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from those meetings as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott, to approve the minutes. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Before we adjourn, just to let you know, next week, we have a workshop, not a workshop, there's the 23rd on the resilience, and the 24th at 7:00 PM, we have a workshop on the boards. Correct? I'm sure everybody knows. Okay. Thank you. Any further business? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned. Okay. Thank you.